I've got some stuff here I want to read before, before we do have the meeting. First of all, I want to bring up the agenda. Give it to anybody. Bring up the agenda. Who emailed the agenda to who? Texted the agenda?
Hand delivered to your office.
Hand delivered to who?
On the 45.
Hand delivered to who?
Laid on the secretary's desk.
My secretary will have her desk when you deliver it.
It was handed, on the secretary's desk.
Handled. You laid it on the secretary's desk? You laid it on the secretary's desk?
Full of cans. Full of cans.
Okay, so, you know when she brought me these papers in there?
I didn't know.
This one. On the radio, Christian, on 45.
Was she, was she working from 45?
She was working at 1:45, 8:00, late, and she was in charge of this. I didn't get a copy of the agenda.
What did you say?
I didn't get a copy of the agenda. Whatever done this week today on protest in way under Taylor S. 1823.
It's a call meeting.
The 67 on that old hasn't been revealed. So...
Let me review your case.
And the reason, reason, the rea- reason I'm gonna say there no valid reason for this meeting, is because of the record. I am a county judge. And I appreciate y'all looking at saving the county money. I've got a couple texts here, if you wanna waste money or whatever, go ahead and do something. We are starting a new fiscal year July 1st. I don't know how much training y'all think it takes to do something or earn something, but I've been here six months and I'm just now about to where I can do this physical software myself. If you all tell me what you'll save, and I appreciate that. And I've got one thing I want to share with you all, and how y'all can save too, what we're gonna do in this meeting. The software is 16,000 some dollars, and I told you all that we don't need to have this meeting. If y'all wanna have this meeting and y'all buy the software, that's left up to you. And I'm already gonna, we're gonna use for 19 and 20, and we're gonna do the same thing we do right now. And the reason I say that, becoming here new, I don't, I'm not saying this other company couldn't give you same advice that they are, but you come in our nest on the phone, you saw the nerve walking through. I can't, I can't afford to give that up right now, for one thing.
Can't afford it.
And another thing, I need to concentrate on running the county, keeping these records up, trying to keep these fees up, and try to give our youth some hope in this county, and try to make a job in this county, moving this county forward.
Do you think supporting taxpayers and saving?
You listen to me.
Forty thousand dollars a year?
I'm saying, I'm saying forty thousand a year. I'm gonna really save me that on the road for me.
Forty thousand, that's a pretty crazy.
I'm saving that on the road for me.
Forty thousand?
I'm saving that on the road for me.
Forty years?
I'm saving that. I'm not saying it's not important to save. I'm saying, I can't afford to try to, we got a new treasure company, 'cause I've heard, we can't, we can't afford to take time to try to do all this training and get all this stuff for July 1st, or what goes into it.
It's not a vaccine.
If you all wanna buy it, you can buy it.
It's not a vaccine.
It ain't about that.
It's about the taxpayer.
That's right. It's about moving this county forward. I can't do what I'm doing if I learn to buy this software and I have to raise. And we just have got to handle all the gulf. So what I'm saying, I'm here to do the best I can to move this county forward. The builder telling me he got his thing going on clock. You're saying you're hand delivering, but you're burning it out or laying it on the desk, and I don't know what got laid on top of it or anything else. But I get a copy of the agenda. I don't know how hard it has been to email it or fax it to up here texting to me. And I've never got a copy of it.
What did you say?
And at many special meetings, we can have you already known, before it already loaded, to email it, or even talk about it. And when you bring it in here, you're at least gonna take time for this if you got it.
So what did you say?
I'm saying this meeting is gonna be contested whatever, whatever done, I just don't see no valid reason for it. We, we've had 25 court meetings at least, and made about half of them just positions, in my opinion.
It's a, if, if taxpayer money is precious, then that's your meeting. But we don't make positions.
Okay. I'm saying we ain't got time to do it. If y'all wanna go ahead and do it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this meeting over, before we, before we get started, like everybody's saying. I'm gonna give us a little bit of a break, please, if you'd like. Do you have a follow-up, again, thank you for another day you've given us through order, and just the same problem, James, and try to discuss and move this county forward through order, and pray you can help us to bring a decision that don't benefit me any way, don't want to look it up, if you're open to help us to do what this is for the county. Here in the middle of this meeting, and just help us to always look at it for us, if you
I pay thank you, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the real public for which you stand as one nation under our ally, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, perfectly on the agenda, discussing, considering the approval of approach of legal information service, physical court, and occupational tax, for the role we're beginning using, using them July 1st, 2019. We got Kathy, who looks like the, we're gonna do a presentation.
Permission to approach the court with information?
Give me a word for that. I'm ready to sit down.
This is just a very small packet of information I've got with me. I know you need to run, hopefully, support for 20, 28 years, you know, if you need to. I do have some materials, if anybody would like to look at it, and get it to me a little If you will look at the map with the yellow counties, you'll see that we're not new in this name. We have 41 pieces of software installed in 34 counties. So it's not a new, I'm not new in the name. How this started is, I was from a little poor eastern Kentucky county called Lewis, that you all may be familiar with, and we couldn't afford the software. You know, it was just expensive back in 98, so I had it written with a gentleman that was a database analyst, the Shawnee State University first day, and he graduated, and made a good lot of work. So I had him to write it, and got noticed by a CPA firm in Louisville, it was RFP does. And the girl, I, the lady asked me, she said, "Is this marketable?" And I said, "I just had it written." So what they went another, they went to Green County, RFP, and the DLG, a lady that's long retired, approached me to see if you would market this software, because she felt like that there was a need for a reasonably priced and cheaply inexpensive annual maintenance fee in eastern Kentucky counties. So that's sort of why this software is, you know, affordable. I was treasurer of Lewis County for 28 years, I'm retired, my snow member, and I do consulting work for a lot of different government agencies. I've been the interim director at Lake Valley Community Action in November, on October 20th, October 22nd, until they got one, a new executive director hired, and they hired him on May 10th, and that was, I was there a lot longer than I wanted to be. But that's just sort of my thing, helping government agencies. Without mentioning any names, you've had a neighbor in county here that's, I've helped them with their budget number, on their budget, for about, probably 70 or 80 hours, medical trips. I'm accessible, I am knowledgeable, I was president of the Treasury Association, and I had been on board for eight years, until I was president in 2010. We have counties, as you can look at that little map while I'm in place, we're not just eastern Kentucky, but also the gentleman that is the programmer, he's a lifelong Lewis County person, I'm a lifelong Lewis County person, Wayne won't know that. And he presently is the database analyst, second from Shawnee State University in Portman, if y'all see graphically from over my area, we've been around on the river, that's 10 miles from here. So he, like I said, he's married, has a little child, not doing anything to move, not moving his wife, you know, works there in Portman, so we're, we're here to stay, we're here to stay. Our annual maintenance fee, a lot of people saying, can't be that cheap, but it is, it's only $1,000 a year. The reason being, it works. You don't, I, you know, with, with 41 pieces of software, if it didn't work, I wouldn't be, I'd be on the phone, and we're set. I don't know presently what's your home, but I do know of the three major ones in Kentucky that are certified for electronic submission in the state of Kentucky, ours is, is the least expensive. We just wrote a new program, Breckin County, if you also choose, we'll start on the new program. We're available 24/7 for phone and/or email support, no limits. If your treasurer, your finance officer needs to call, we need to talk for four hours. Before I talk for four hours, I'll get here driving out of nine miles and get here. And when we have to come on site, we don't charge you. I help with budgets, I help with reconciliation, 'cause I was a banker for 26 years, along with being treasurer for 13. I was operations officer of the bank, so I get plenty of experience on reconciling, balancing books. The FCA is programmed, the difference, the major difference is, is payroll module. We do not have a payroll module, because we have 24 counties, and we surveyed them and asked if they wanted the payroll module. We had 24 counties that submitted. Most counties and agencies are going to outsource payroll. And I'll give you an example, I've been over at Lake Valley, they have 184 employees. And while I've been at Lake Valley, we outsourced their payroll. And they, Payroll Solutions does it in Lexington, and I have no connection whatsoever with them, because when I was treasurer of Lewis County, CPA firm downers in action. And our charge to have the payroll done every two weeks was $65. Now let me tell you something, you can't hire a payroll clerk for $2,750, no way. But Payroll Solutions is one I've become acquainted with through some of my other counties, about six counties do it with them, and I recently switched over there, and they have 184 employees, and they charge them about $500 a month, which is about $6, $6,000 a year. But in that, they do bi-weekly, non-quarter ones. They send in your child support, they send in your arrangements, they do everything for you. You just, it's not feasible anymore to do your payroll items. So that's why we didn't add a payroll module, because most of the other ones have a big up charge to have the payroll module on there, and usually it is more than to have it outsourced. Now also in outsourcing your payroll, they do your direct deposits, and I'm not sure if y'all do direct deposit. Not sure if you do direct deposit, but the direct deposits, some of the payroll, not payroll, some of the fiscal report software don't have the capability to create the file and put it in there so it's up to the banks, and the banks charge you also. I don't know if that's your off case or not, that's just something to look at, but if you go to a payroll provider, they create that file. Like I said, if you find in your information packet highlighted items, I can send you any report, we have the capability to export anything in the software to anybody who so choose, so we can go through the software, export it to Excel, send it to your auditors, and save you money, it keeps them all aside, a lot of different things. Y'all will see the prices in there, but the price is, if you have two pieces of software in your county for every second, third, or fourth, you all might have shared or clerk that's interested in software, you get a $5 discount. So those prices on there are high. I guess, you know, sort of like, you know, thinking about it, it's just, it's just what you want to, what burden you want to incur on your taxpayers. I mean, I'm relatively sure, I've never used another software, 'cause I have this written, but I'm confident that you have good software. I just think I can provide software and maybe save the county money. The training, the training, we have 100% videos right now, that your treasurer, finance officer can look at in the software. Like I said, 100%, I'm accessible about any time, and I do not stop at software. I was a treasurer 28 years, and I've learned a little bit, a little bit about this game. So I'm, I'm absolutely accessible to your finance department for any treasurer, treasurer or finance officer question you might have. We're flexible on our payments, you know, if you go and contract with us today, you don't have to pay for it today, if you wanna wait till the next fiscal year, you wanna wait, if you get your truck license, I know how it all works. You know, we do the same things with our fee offices. You know, right now sheriffs don't have much money, you know, they'll let them pay for it, peace, Amber, whatever. And I believe in it, I had it written, and it was written by a treasurer that could afford software, and it has developed into being 100% compliant Department of Labor government, and we are certified to electronically submit. Electronic submission is another pain, I know some of the software should charge you an annual fee to electronically submit, we do not. Your files can be created and transmitted to the Department of Labor government, and they can transmit in about five minutes with no charge. There's nothing hidden here. The annual support fee is $1,000, and then I have had the question asked, well, what if next year goes to $5,000? Well, contractually, we can only raise the software every four years, and it increments at $100. So let's just say that next year we do the fourth year. This is the sixth year we have raised it. But let's say we'd raise it next year, it'd go to 1,000 to 1,100, and then could be no raise by contract for the next year. So it's not one of those things that's, we're trying to buy you next year that we're gonna charge and expense it, annual support. Like I said, we've got 42 software applications, from cities, counties, sheriffs, clerks, fiscal courts, occupational tax, we've got 42 pieces installed in 31 areas of cities. So we're not new, we're not new to God. And it developed from its inception since 1998, so I've been in this 20 years. But I, my goal is, is to try to, I've been one of those eastern Kentucky counties that didn't have a lot of money, and I'm sure that it's, there's advantages to having the expensive software, if you can afford it, but it doesn't do anything reporting wise or report wise, mind it, the difference is the payroll module. I don't know how long y'all want me to talk, and I'm open for questions.
Okay, I've got a feeling that we, one of the FCA is not for our license, 40,000.
That is for the occupational tax.
We're grateful for that.
Excuse me? Yes, excuse me? I didn't hear you.
Okay, well, the thing I got, you got that $1,000 for annual support, the email that I got, I thought it was, the software was $13,500?
Well, actually, we're gonna give you a discount. We're gonna give you both pieces of software for $13,000. That's to purchase the license. You can have it on one computer, two computers, or 73 computers, we don't care. Now, secondly, on that, I'm, I'm ready to provide you with one year's free support. Our, our standard is six months, but I'm willing to give you all one, three year. So for one, three years, support and the purchase of the software will cost you $13,000. You can pay it quarterly, you can pay it semi-annually, you can pay it at front, you can pay it monthly. The thing about it, the programmer and I don't make our living with this, so we can be flexible with the courts.
So the first year is gonna be $13,000?
Uh-huh.
And including the annual, that include?
I will give you that first year.
We're, we're currently paying around $16,000 per year, so.
Well, next year we'll pay $2,000. One for one for occupational tax and one for FCA is next fiscal year, 2021.
So basically, after the first year, we're gonna save about $10,000 per year.
Yes, on both that, actually, I'm just saying about $10,000 a year. Now like I said, if we raise ours and goes at 500, I'm not saying we're wanting to, $100 ain't gonna make or broke anybody, we try to give our clients, because I've been in your shoes, been in your shoes, and know how expensive it is, expensive it is to operate in here.
Okay, how many are you been with since?
Since 1998. It's what, when the software was written, we incorporated in 2001. And I think it, I think it's 2001, I think it's in that pressure.
So, 2001, you did, how many, how many counties are you present with, you have only got 30 highlighted here, 34, sorry.
Well, there's 31 counties highlighted, and they have 42 pieces of software. Now, you have to realize too, we never marketed this software. It's word of mouth, it's just excellent word of mouth, and, you know, there's, there's such a price difference, that when the county calls, maybe DLG or PECO, they say, "You've got these three, call this one, this one, and this one," and I'll get a call, and I'll ask about the price, and that's how we acquire. But now I'm in a whole different ballgame. I'm going to, I have retired, and I'm going to address a lot of fiscal courts, and like I said, I think that you probably have excellent software, but mine works too. If you have a problem, if there's something that's specific to Breckin County Fiscal Court, Mark will write it in or make you a report, and that's how assistance is drawn. Once we review a report for Judge Noble, we offer it to all of our counties, if there's something specific you want. So the first year to buy, like I said, you can pay forward quarterly, semi-annual, whatever. It's gonna cost you $13,000 for both, both pieces, and that would be $1,000 for each application, $2,000 a year.
After approval, how long can you get everything up and running?
I can get everything up and running, you're about to leave from my house in about six hours. And that is one thing that we can do, we, we buy a program that is secure and safe and wearable program, and I can log into the gray boards, the finance officer, with Ray sitting there looking, he can allow me to log into his computer for that application, and I can sit there and call him down there and do that. And the minute Ray was done, Ray would box it off. It's with that person's, it's their pleasure, not anything.
Can I be available for yourself, please?
I'm available, yes. And let me tell you, I put a couple of gals in, I'm on Sunday, and he went at 10 o'clock, because that's when they, they work, and I don't, you know how, Ray Moore, if he's a finance officer, he might say, "I need this, and this, and this," and I might say, "Well, I'm gonna show Jeffersonville, and I'll call you back." And I've been there, done that, and I will be there. If I don't, I'll be in, how many then? But I don't believe in people. I do 90% of the support, unless there's a technical problem, technical goes to the programmer. And like I said, we live six miles apart.
And another question, are you saying something about 24 counties? Didn't want payroll solution, that what you're talking about?
At the, at the time, we had only 24 counties, this is four or five years ago. And they didn't, we asked about putting a payroll module in it. Now, granted, if you put a payroll module in it, you're gonna have support fee for your, as your tax rates change, your taxes ever changing. So the payroll module is not a standalone thing in itself. If you use QuickBooks, QuickBooks updates, it's probably gonna be $4,000 a year. That's why so many of our counties has went to vendors, outsourcing there, and auditors love it. We outsourced ours when I was treasurer there, I took the full-time job in 2008, we started outsourcing in 2008, and I look back. We run Lewis County with two gals, the treasurer and the girl that serves as finance officer, and the judge's secretary. That's all, we have about $6 million, $7 million left to do. And after I left, it's the same thing, just two people. Now we do not have an occupational tax, Banksport does, and Banksport uses our occupational tax software also. Now, and we're not, we're not a small county, we're not a small county software. I don't think they care for me terrible, but we use Flowy, you know, we're a pretty big county, Mercer, Lippert, Taylor, so I've got, we've got some big counties, and it, and they don't have any problem. And, and yes, some of these counties are counties that's come off of CBR software and fiscal court software. And like I said, I'm, I'm open to good softwares. I, I will not bribe anybody's software, 'cause they obviously work, but it's just a matter of the support we get and the pressure.
So if we were up here at that, what would we look and say?
Well, how much did you say your support was for the, a year?
16,000.
16,400.
All right, if you're saying 16,400, the first year's gonna cost you 13,500, or 13,000, it's up here 13,000. I'm gonna give you free software support for the whole year. So then it's gonna cost you 2,000 for year two, 2,000 for year three, 2,000 for year four. So if you have the 13, 6,000, it's gonna cost you 9,000 dollars.
Like we waited, but payroll, the, the, they think they'll count payroll for them? They want to do payroll debt?
No, the payroll, and I will tell you what the payroll, like I said, I think, did some, did you just mention that you got charged for the bank converting your files?
$100.
Which is absolutely normal, but Payroll Solutions, which I just switched to at Lake Valley, they produce that file for your bank at no charge, it's in charge. Now we pay about 250, and we've got 184 employees, and I think that if you're in the neighborhood, and you can't quote me out of work for them, but it's gonna be pretty close, I think the neighborhood of 60 or under, it's about $100 to pay. So it probably costs you about the same to have your payroll processed, your 941's done, your W2's done, your quarterly report's done, about the same as what you're paying presently, if my facts are right.
But we won't be paying the bank?
You won't be paying the bank.
So we actually?
This, this particular provider, and I've never used a provider that the bank charged, even the CPA firm actually created those files.
Okay, how long are you going to be about this program here? I don't know, y'all personally?
I didn't turn in, we talked to Ted with his colleagues before, a long time, we just all that.
I mean, with the way to go outside, also, for your business, I found out last Thursday Friday, there's something, Ted is trying to get our full bill up here for how many years?
Well, I was here, I didn't come to fiscal court right when Mr., Mr. Back retired, and, and I think that's okay, I think him and the gentleman that owns fiscal software had a good personal relationship, and I was okay with that. You know, like I said, you know, and I don't just take care of my clients. I've helped Charlotte numerous times when she was there, the skin would be on vacation, and, and I just like to help with everybody I can help. And if, like I said, you don't particularly have to use my software, but I'll help you anyway.
She's not leaving the game.
I'm not leaving the game.
She's not leaving the game.
I was treasurer 28 years.
That's my question, I mean, y'all might just want to vote on this lady, what if you make a gain for her, and we do it, and we wish, evaluate, that's my question.
Well, one thing I will say, I was here a week or so ago, prepared to come to fiscal court, and I guess it was canceled, so I was all the way here and turned around and was back, so, and if nothing else, I'm persistent, I think I can help you all.
Last week? Oh, last week?
Yeah.
I mean, well, my, I mean, well, my question, that would come to be right now, first week of June here, when, and I went to June last week, too, for whatever, was, 48 companies?
Well, the reason I think that it's here right now, because I'm, I'm quite sure that your $16,000 bills do the first that you want.
Mm-hmm. And something about what I would make it?
Well, and I'm quite sure that I can have you go and ready to go July 1st. And you don't have to pay me, you don't have to pay me, you can do it, like I said, semi-annually, annually. I know how the budgets work, I know where you got money, I know that most counties is broke until you get county revenue. So I don't care, contractually, you can pay for it, I mean, I don't wanna stretch it out over 10 years, but we will work with you.
So you all, you all just gonna have that last week too, should we go through anything, right?
No. I had, I had approached, I had approached.
I mean, I haven't ever heard, I have heard of something like that.
Well, I'm, it's like I said, this is technically my third time here.
Charlotte's always been opposed to it, so that's why I've never mentioned, said on her face.
So you've just, you've told Charlotte about it?
Oh, I've told Charlotte, and Charlotte took over the pressure.
I've told Charlotte about it, yeah.
And I never pushed it, and I told Charlotte, Charlotte had told me, and she said, well, she said, "I really like it," and different things, and I said, "Charlotte, it's okay." I said, "If you're, you know, if you're not gonna be on, if you're not gonna be treasurer much longer, or work much longer, I can understand that," but it never mattered for me helping Charlotte, 'cause I've got anybody up to help.
You say that kind of way, yes.
That's, we shouldn't be here. Well, say, I mean, well, say if y'all do, but just for what I'm asking, I'm like, at least like a new man, nobody. Well, say, I'm, well, say, if y'all knew, but just for what I'm asking, like, it looks like you knew, but nobody.
I think, I don't have to switch you. I don't have to switch you July first. I can switch you in August. But the thing about it is, why pay sixteen thousand dollars when you have to turn around and pay me thirteen? I can get, I can get you up and ready to go. I might have your roost here for there too, but I don't think so. I don't think so.
For two thousand versus sixteen?
Well, the two thousand, I'm giving you the first year for free. But every year thereafter. And like I said, worst case scenario, if I go to twenty-two hundred dollars and then it's not going to raise again for four years. But the one thing about it is, and it's what I tell everybody and I'll tell you all, it's not that this software is cheap, it's affordable, it does everything the Department of Local Government requires of us. I can even pull things that they needed KCO. And like I said, we're not cheap, but neither one of us ever had to make our living. It was on, I'm retired, thirty-three years, I'm treasurer, twenty-eight, a lot of time. I'm retired and I'm just winding down at the, being the executive director of community action. And then that's what I'm doing now. I have found a lot of financial problems, I'm just a financial girl.
We think there are a lot of big counties here, maybe like Clark County.
Clark County also uses the sheriff's department. And we haven't, we haven't, uh, we haven't advertised our sheriffs because I wanted to wait till I retired. So, Lewis County was written for Lewis County and has been tested for four years. And then Craig Peoples needed to be the peoples at, at Pendleton County. And then, um, they asked for us to install it at Clark. Now, and McGawson, I don't think Kyle would care. McGawson has every piece of software we have. They have fiscal court, they have occupational tax, and they have sheriff, which is getting rid of possibly COVID. And we have sold it to the clerk. But now, I think that the, uh, we have Clark has fiscal court software and sheriff's software. And, uh, we're getting ready to, we want to go to Sheriff's Division this year.
Wolf and Perry?
Wolf, Perry, Letcher, Wolf, Perry, Letcher, McGawson. Oh, I don't know. It's on your thing there. I got, and you know, I got a lot of them concentrated down in the south central. But what, if you will look at that map, what happens is it's word of mind. When you get Russell County, who's my first county in south central, Leanne. And then Adair, Taylor, you can see, you can watch the map. They're, they're neighbors. And you know, they'll call me, I'll say, "Go look and see what your neighbor's got to sell." And that's why they're moving central. But we're not, we're as far west as you can get, or in Hickman and Ford.
All right, lady.
Any more questions for anyone? I have some extras if anybody would like to have a clue. Can I get more? Like I said, we're giving you, giving you a ton of the software to process.
All right, Kathy, later, uh, presentation, you all have any questions or? If you're in consideration?
It's out of D.
It's out of D. It's D.
Out of D to approve.
You got your Inanaga?
C.
Anyone around here? Very similar to the Gimsen down there. Donnie, you have to run one?
Are you good?
I got for all of my name, I did. Any of your final name, anyway?
It's out of D.
You're saying, I got, I'm playing the restrictions of prayer.
D, out of D.
No.
So, we want C, we want C. C, that's out of C.
I know, I got, I may get on the same page here. Mindset discussion, consideration, approval of personal legal information.
That won't matter.
Don't get a grip on them, bro.
I want to talk to you. D and C. I think it's, I think it's, seven, seven, nine, five, so I like, I don't know. I'll give myself, I'll make a motion, I'll say.
Motion for Ray Moore, second, for Donnie Bush. Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Ray Moore.
Aye.
El Chantre.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. B, consideration of approval to begin, begin realizing payroll solutions are overrated for our payroll process? Is that something that you just talked on, Kathy? Is that something that you?
I've mentioned to you some of their pricing. I do not work for them or advocate for them, but I just knew that loved my county shoes.
Kathy, you got some information on that, yeah? You got any information on that? My payroll solution incorporated. I was going to somebody, they said they picked you up first. Okay, you want to next to him? Uh, E, consideration of approval to establish nine a month position, a part-time position, never be taken twenty-three hour work week. And you don't need to worry about that. Finlay coughs through my position and I'm hoping that position will end when they help.
You're the finance officer?
Don't worry about that.
Are you, are you finally?
I am doing the finance officer, that's when I've been on the phone that way. There are, there are some time. We all, we all think in the, uh, next thing.
Okay, I need this discussed, I could please.
Uh, we, we ended up discussing it, it's a petition. Well, consideration of approvals of establishing rate and pay for the county finance officer, the county may buy. I mean, you got somebody's name and that's a name I'll bring anyway, but need to say for that.
I, I make the motion, approve the decision, I discuss this.
Uh, we going on to the next?
Motion, okay.
Again, also for discussion and, uh, I make a motion during the week. Motion during the week.
Can I, please, for, since I have gone into set the software, I have purchase order agreements and we execute both as of now. I have purchase order agreements for the fiscal court software and the occupational tax.
I'll get that with you, man.
Okay, just, just let me, let me reiterate.
Yeah, I'm going to make it, and everything has to be approved before we, with the anyway, so. We got to finish them, about five meetings, so.
But you?
Yeah, no, that'll only get, take, get there. Does it be valid?
But it's on, then I can install it. But I'm willing to, to work with you.
All right. Motion during. You might, I might make a motion during, you know, the second. I don't want it to take as long as you want to, but I've got a thing to do. But I'm writing my term deal on it.
Thank you, you discussed the, the finance office petition.
I think you can unseak that.
Well, according to Rockwell's voter, the meeting's got to be secured during, so we can discuss, uh, I, E, on the jet. All right. According to KRS six, seven, one, I mean, seven, one, zero, this paragraph seven, this administrative code and also the KRS six, seven, one, seven, one. It says, "The county judge executive may exercise with the approval of the fiscal court and the authority to appoint, supervise, suspend, and remove red-canning personnel." All right. With that being said, January seventh, Christopher Gilding was harrying by majority of the vote of the court. Your chairman?
All right, I'm going to move back, back up here. Only consideration of approval to establish a filing office position that part-time and never take twenty-three hour work. You might want to make a motion to do that. Okay, discussing, now, that, the vote, so on for this then. Uh, F, consideration of approval to establish a regular payday, the county officer code, offer filing position at a seven twenty-five an hour.
Motion.
Motion for Ray Moore.
Yes.
Who's going second then? Any second? Okay, I'm going to discuss that a little bit, payroll, which is whatever it is. Finance position. Have you all, I think, if you give somebody seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour to be a finance officer, make it what y'all like, that's all I need.
Well, we actually do, according to your proposal.
Ain't your mind perfect?
I'm trying to.
Okay.
According to your proposed budget, uh, you had in your proposed budget, what a position as a finance officer, insurance coordinator, at rate of forty-two thousand seven one and fifty-five hundred per hour. Okay? Did you, did you?
I did.
All right. Christopher Gilding, like I was saying a few minutes ago, was harrying, I mean, uh, January seventh, by majority of the court, of these three positions. Now, the more important coordinator, finance officer, health insurance coordinator, at rate of nineteen ninety-three per hour, which is forty-one, four fifty-four, forty, and, okay? I'll read the KRS once again. Paragraph seven, KRS six, seven, one, seven, one, zero. The county judge executive exercises with the approval of the fiscal court the authority to appoint, supervise, suspend, or remove red-canning personnel. I've got a written letter here with, with fisherman's, that you removed Christopher Gilding of two positions.
Any of you get to have it, go down and do it.
Day it, May seventeen, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so that's why you say the fee will send for seven twenty-five an hour.
I'm saying, as, as of right now, Christopher Gilding is still.
I see, okay, that's why you do it. Then, uh, Ray Moore, wait in the motion, it's second. There, uh, El Chantre, Ray Moore.
Aye.
El Chantre.
Aye.
Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Make a motion during. I sort of like all these lists, boys.
Oh, what I'm saying is.
I say that. Donnie Bush.
Speeded lit, lit gas.
Donnie Bush, make a motion during, make a motion, and I say. El Chantre.
Can we discuss, guys, get it?
Well, you want to ban them, we already know, we on the jury. I don't want you to discuss them. What we have to be, what we get, if we accept.
You lost legal, I guess.
You don't, you don't, you already promised to meet.
If you got something in the administrative code, it's different. We need to know about that.
We need to read it and see what the judge do. Well, we just, we just, we're coming, there's a, there's a duty, one, one round, one round.
We have to do this every, every season.
That's where we end.
That's where they go to the church. We have to do certain seasons in that county. We can't conduct the bid in some county here, too. We have to go to, uh, the lawyers, courts.
You realize this, in June, we probably could have four meetings at a time now.
Who called the law?
I did. No, you, you, you share. You're going to make a motion, you made a motion on before during the week. Els? Els, you have your name?
Name?
Name? Donnie Bush?
Oh.
Els, check, Mike Roer.
You know, it's impossible.
Hey, hey, we, we doing? You're a special meeting, we got nobody on, on the thing.
Got people paying to do occupational tax and he does, only commander, many times.
Other word, I'm waiting to take you out here.
We, we hired you up. Christopher. Christopher's done these, these, she's, she's making the money for these, these, these positions. She was hard to do this.
And we can't ask questions.
No, I'm not listening.
I'm in a special week, you have.
Because everyone's a special maker, there's not been a regular making because you're doing the illegal.
We're trying to retire. That's it.
That's fine.
That's it. The only year we're doing ill. Here's your fire court, on the world.
No, it's our court, it's the tables' court.
I know, I put my house in this house.
It's on the wall.
It's on the wall.
It's on the wall.
And they're picking. I didn't say it when they're calling out.
You locked us out?
Locked you out.
We didn't play in here, sir, did we?
No, and they broke you in, and I asked your sheriff to get him out here, he did.
So, but you're saying that you don't owe us?
Yeah, I told them to get y'all out of here.
It's not your building.
I thought, hey, you do. I tell you, I do any court. I mean, you have to make the game, son. You're right, you make you do it, Donnie. Don't knock.
You, you want to be a warrior.
Hey, hey, you're not.
Act, act, be.
You're not.
Could I change the sub? I was, I was going, I'm, that's kind of a different sub. I've been down the winter for over a year before we gained my business. Before this last, the way, without my career, it's all right. It's a total paper, so.
So, just hear this, people, like the. Someone take a picture, maybe y'all take a picture, say, you're a juror. If y'all have some questions, I'll be late, talk to you too. Come on, if you're here.
Except that you only have anything to pay.
There's a nice, that's, that's, that's a rational. What'd you say out here?
Well, we've been late and get paid for two months, we've got, I think.
What they do, anything for here?
No, you said John Collins, uh, they, you missed some, stood, I already said, y'all know. Uh, your boy said he met the court, he knocked the scene.
Hey, George, you come back to the service.